Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the March 23rd, 2023 meeting of the HP ARB. And let's start the meeting by saluting our flag. I fight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I'll accept a motion to discuss or to approve the minutes of March 9th, 2023.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Yeah, all in favor? Okay. So we have a couple of things on our public hearing agenda. We're gonna try to keep some of the people who are repeating here multiple times short because we have about twenty different items on the agenda tonight. Okay, so the first is 207 Madison Street. Seven minutes is the goal here. And who's representing 207?
Just to briefly walk through what we are with the project and the changes in the base is the last meeting. On December 8th, the first hearing, at the board's recommendation, the applicant presented a new design on January 26th that reduced the length of the addition by 22 feet and brought the addition closer to the main structure. Unfortunately, for some reason, the internet isn't working here this evening, so I would ask you all to refer to the drawings that we presented, because we're unable to bring them up and put them on the screen. At the January 26th meeting, we also discussed the stone wall with ivy. On February 9th, we presented alternatives to the stone wall and gave the board the options available that the applicant was willing to comply with while still retaining the integrity of the design. At that time, the board suggested we should make the addition subservient, and as a result, you have the plans before you today, which also reflect a reduction in the ridge height of the addition and additional landscaping to obscure any view of the addition. We've also submitted a new analysis of the number of similarly situated properties that contain historic homes, and I'm sure this board has approved substantial modern additions that illustrate the precedent of the village historic district with regard to the proposed additions. I do have it gammed up, because I'm now going to turn it over to the architect. He did go over the Department of Interior Standards and recommendations, and with respect to this particular property, provided a written statement and I think he'll go over those statements as well.
No, they're gonna tell us now.
And I choose standards and recommend standards that are taken directly from the Department of Interior Standards for historic properties, pages 156 to 158, which discuss the additions on historic structures. Javier? Can you hear me? Unmute yourself.
Hi, are you talking to me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Yes, hi. The audio is not very good, so I hear on and off, but I think you're asking about the changes that we had done from last time, correct?
Yes, this is the Department of Interior Standards and the recommendations and how the project complies with those.
Yes. So we have, we listened to all your recommendations as always, and then we have done two important changes that I think they fixed completely all your concerns. One, we shrink as much as we could the height of the house. When I say as much as we could, I mean the maximum possible, because we have a stair that we need to connect the top floor. And we cannot go lower than, I can see 66 or 65, what we got in the stairs volume. So that defines the height of the lower roof. And then we also lower the other, the other two roofs, the roofs that they had, the pitch accordingly. And so again, this is with this design, keeping the same pitch of the roof of the original house, which is also one of the important things that we wanted to keep. Sorry. So doing that, this is, this is the maximum we could shrink it. And the other thing also was your concern about seeing any addition at all. And what we have done is a, it's planned trees on the back of the existing house, which first of all also gives like more privacy to the, our backyard and completely, completely hides the new addition from the street. So you will never be able to see addition from any point. I think you have the render. Sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
You saw them in the, I saw it in the folder.
He's referring to the new renderings with the new landscaping.
Right.
Yeah, I saw it.
So the original, let's see, what was the difference between this roof height and this roof height?
Javier, can you explain what exactly was added?
But if you look at the one down here.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. This is giving us 16 inches. I'm wondering what that depth was.
Oh, the 16 is from which height, from here to here?
The 16 is from.
From top red line to bottom red line.
That's the 16.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out what it was.
Do they have the rendering here? Yeah, but it's.
So it shows you that you can't see it.
Yeah.
But this is it right here. And you can see it, didn't he, right?
No, no, this, well, this is the, this is the, like a porch or whatever. It's not a building that we saw, right?
This is the ivy covered thingy, right? All right, so it's sticking out to the side. So you stand at the street, you see the ivy covered, whatever, I think. It's a little hard to tell. It's got a little.
I worked through it.
And there's this, like a little doorway.
Oh, here we go again.
See, here.
Yeah, it does.
They're new plantings.
Yeah. Yeah, which is fine.
But also. Also, I wanted to talk about something that is new. We rescued from the Department of Interior Standards and Recommendations. We rescued this chart with a list of recommendations for additions in landmark residential buildings, right? And I was surprised how so aligned we are in some of the items that you precisely were against, and they say clearly here. For example, using the same forms, materials and color range of the historic building in a manner that does not duplicate it, but distinguishes the addition from the original building. This is exactly what we are doing. So we respectfully design addition that distinguishes from the original building, but respects the same palette of materials, the same pitch of the roofs, the same details, the same type of window. We're not adding any new material, as an example. Also, well, designing a new addition that is compatible with the historical building, I want the person to think that this is compatible. This is more subjective. So we're using the wood singles, the glass, the stone. Another of the points is constructing a new addition that results in the least possible loss of the historical materials. And also not obscure damage or destroy. This means that the impact on the original shape needs to be the minimum, and this is exactly what we did. We went to the rear facade. We did a very, very small connection to the former house. And so if we are not following these directions, we, I think, we need to get like, we clear direction on what exactly we need to do, because this is, this is exactly what we have been doing. I'm trying to read something that is even more. Construction, a new addition or a secondary or non-character defining elevation, which is exactly what we did. The front facade is intact. And a limited in size and a standard relationship to a historic building. Okay, perfect. We didn't surpass the height of the building. We create in the connecting point, we lower the height to create like a more respectful connection. So we can facilitate you this chart and also explanation of exactly what we have done and why we follow all these recommendations. But for me, it's very clear. It doesn't say in any moment that there is a specific how for height for the existing addition. And we tried to shrink as much as possible, but again, in, at this point, we were given a specific footage to build. So a client that buys a property that is $3 million and have some requirements, they need certain amount of bedrooms, set down for space, and they buy this property because in all the guidelines, it says you can build as much as this. In the zoning, it says you can build as high as this. In this standards, everything we accomplish. And then coming here to a meeting and hearing that we had to shrink the house in like to half, only one floor, it's something that we really cannot, we really cannot do. So the maximum for two heights, and this is what we can do, we have shrunk the maximum possible. And we have put the trees, so we hide, we have hidden completely the extension. You will never see from the street. All the materials are the same from the existing house and all this list I already read. So do we, do we have anything against like what we have right now? I just wanna understand, like, if there's any issue right now.
I'm gonna open up for other people to comment before I say something. Anybody want to make a comment first? Okay.
I just wanna double check that we got, that there's no stone wall going way up. That's true. We got rid of the stone. Yeah, that it keeps in line with the foundation.
He still, he shows stone samples on one of the elevations. And he shows stone here. Right, so I guess.
Okay, I don't have an elevation.
Is the rendering.
We don't have any elevation down here.
View two, the porch is supported by a stone foundation. Is that existing?
Yes. Same type of stone that we were going to use.
So what's, what's the answer?
Stone, but I'm asking about the supports under the porch and stuff.
The overhangs.
The porch, I said rendering to. The porch of the original house, is that presently supported by stone?
The front porch.
The front porch, yes.
I know.
Well, it's rendered as such here.
The stone, is the stone currently supporting the front porch?
I don't believe it is.
Because in this rendering, of course, renderings look clean and new as they should, but this stone wall that's supporting the porch, which is wooden. I'm just wondering if, if that's the way it is presently built, or is that a divine concept that's being introduced here to be compatible with the other stonework that's being proposed?
No, the existing foundation was used as a template.
I understand, but what supports the porch is not the foundation. The foundation is what supports that house. So what I'm asking is, is stone supporting the porch? Or not, I don't know. I mean, it's represented here, but the rendering view two is.
We're not changing any material. We're not changing any material at all from the, from the existing house. Yeah, it's exactly what is there. We will, if we have to replace some area because it's damaged, we will, but it's exactly, the existing house is exactly what it is. The stone that you see there is the stone that is existing right now. The deck is the same, is the wood, singles or singles, same thing, same thing.
So I'd still like to know the answer to my question. Which is how high the stone goes up on the addition.
There's my, there's my pictures.
I don't have an elevation.
Because we're seeing, we're seeing pictures that would seem to contradict that, that in fact the porch, which is part of the original house, which you are not redoing. You know, the emphasis is on your design work is that which extends off the back and all the, all the justifications, exclamations, etc. But this rendering.
What is, okay.
Shows that the old porch that wraps around the front and side of the house in this view is supported by stonework, which you'd rather, you know, if that's what someone has previously done, then that's what it is. I'm just asking, because this visually does not look.
It looks like it's on piling.
Yeah.
It should be. It should be supported on something and then faced maybe with a little wooden trellis or something like that, because aesthetically, this makes that whole front seem much more for heavy. It's, it's, it's not historically right, but I'm just saying if someone did that previously, then that's what you're working with. That's understandable. But if it isn't, and you're sort of tying your new to the old together and introducing that stonework there, that's not, it's not appropriate.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't look to be.
I agree with you. I rather having like a floating deck that is much more lighter. We have a stone right now there supporting it. And if it's in bad condition and it's preferable not having a stone there, that's perfect. I mean, we, we obviously keeping the stone in the foundation, but in that deck, if we.
Okay.
Saying that stone is not supporting, currently supporting the deck.
Call it up the picture of the current house.
Okay.
An issue.
Well, we just have that that is here that suggests that it's not even there. So I'm not sure where that.
He said, just said it was on piling.
Here it is. It's coming up from the foundation running.
Right.
And then stop. Here in the front of the house.
Right. So let's just assume that this detail, view two, is not accurate, and that in fact, the existing old porch is not supported by a stone foundation. So that.
Our, yeah, our intention is not touching, not changing absolutely anything from the existing. So if it's a mistake on the render, I apologize, but the intention is keeping it exactly as is. So we don't have an intention of adding, adding anything. So I'm trying to find a picture from the front. So if you're right, and we don't have it, that's even better.
There's a lattice.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we got a picture there.
So if you look at the January, the January 19th submission of pictures that you did, you have one called the north elevation. It shows the front door, entrance door to the house. And then it shows the porch, which I actually remember being all green. I don't remember, I was by there a couple of weeks ago, but anyway. And but then you will see as the foundation runs back towards the south, I guess, that you'll see some stone facade. Now, if you can find that, I'd like you to do that, because you showed.
I just opened the picture and there's, there's brick. There's actually like brick on the front. And on the sides, you have the same wood lattice in very bad condition. The brick is also in not good condition. And I don't, I don't think that's giving anything to the house. So you, you tell us. If we have to keep exactly the brick, we will. If we can just get rid of it, we will. We don't have an intention of removing or adding anything on the existing, you know?
I think they want.
It's, I think it's.
I think they want you to just have the deck floating with the lattice to cover the skirt.
Yes.
But not a stone wall as the renderings would suggest.
It kind of modernizes the front porch in a way that better rationalizes the additions to the back, and these two should be, should look very different.
And I think we're okay with that.
This is, this is the from.
Yeah, that's, that's a pile. That's a brick pier. It's supporting the corner.
So you've got columns, you've got columns on the corners, and then lattice work to cover it up, which is lattice is very common.
We, we can keep it, I mean, you, you are more, you know more about it. So if you tell me that we have to keep that, we can.
Okay.
I mean, we're going down a rabbit hole here because we're way past the seven minutes, but there are just so many details that are represented. The columns are not represented as they are. These are fluted columns, which come down and rest on the deck directly. What appears here are unfluted columns, which have little bases. So I'm just not confident in how this design is being shown, because the whole.
Right.
And this board is very familiar with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. Thanks for repeating them for them, but we were quite familiar with them. And what you're looking to do is to preserve the original building unchanged, unless you have to restore it or, you know, replace something that's not holding it up. But I don't believe that that's been represented.
Okay, we're telling, we're saying that we're keeping is exactly as is. We're already like changing anything that is damaged. So we have repeated this a few times. I can go there again and do like a hyper realistic render of the existing situations, but at the end, the purpose of this is the same. We're keeping exactly the same as is, the existing building, exactly the same. We're not changing anything. No features, no columns.
So I understand that's your intention. However, if the drawing that is shown, excuse me, if the drawing that is shown is what is ultimately approved, then that is what can be built if it needs to be built, and therefore.
Okay, so it's, we have an issue of a conversation here.
So let me, let me, let me suggest an interim step, Zach, if you don't mind. No, no, no.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I'm trying to schedule your time. That's what I'm asking permission for. Maybe you can meet with Zach onsite, and you guys can go with what sort of detail needs to be in the rendering. So we don't have any misunderstandings, so you don't have to return in additional time. If you guys schedule that you can meet, maybe give yourselves an hour, hour and a half. If another member of the board would like to meet there and join you guys. We can do that. Now, Bethany, you have something.
A quick question, in that, could it just be presented, this information about the front house, just be presented on the plan? Why would we need, why would we need another render?
That's my. Or you can make it a condition of approval, board members, if you wanted to do that too.
Yeah, you can write it down.
Right, but I'd like Zach to go, because the question I haven't asked is, that again, getting back to the, that front picture that we looked at and then running of the foundation. You showed different types of facade coverings here. You show something called STO3, stone, that seems to look like what's pictured. And I'm wondering, is that going to be, are you trying, two open questions are. One is Judith wants to know how high this stone facade is going to go. And my question is, is the STO3 the stone that you're going to use?
I have one more question, which is.
Because, because.
The steps.
Just let me get, say this.
Okay.
If you go back to what you provided to us from historic preservation, it does say to use the same material, if I'm reading this correctly, right? So if there's no stone there in terms of a wall color covering. And the final thing I want to say is, I think you must admit, this has come a long way from what you first came to us with. And while we appreciate the fact that you've made a lot of, been responsive to our requests, there's still some open acts, okay? And we don't deny that. So we're trying to make this as efficient as possible. So if you meet with Zach, I think, and would you like to meet?
I. Maybe. I can comment on the addition too.
Okay.
Um, so I think the addition being 16 inches lower is not enough. It feels like this addition is a fortress and not a historic residential community. And I don't love the landscape design, because that also feels kind of like a fortress, like let's hide our expensive house from the community. And we're more of a neighbor friendly community. And that is how I feel.
I kind of feel the opposite, in that I feel that they have listened to us and they have voted down quite a bit. And I'm, however, to work out the, the original house, I think we should go forward with that. But I think at this stage, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the height and the, of the addition.
Yes. I would like to say something.
Please.
All right. I'm still back on stone. I'm looking at this rendering and I see these stone columns holding up the white picket fence. And I don't think stone columns on a white picket fence is at all Sag Harbor.
At determination.
Oh, yeah.
Also, going up the. To the front. Showing the stone underneath the front porch, which we've already said, okay, no stone on the front porch. That asks the question, what is, what are those two steps going to look like? And what is your front walk?
Okay, so I think the most practical thing is asking you the question. So now, right now is brick. Everything is brick. Are we okay? Are we all here agree that brick is the best option? It's exactly what it is right now. Because I, in order to be more efficient, you know, and move forward, I think we should agree on, during the meetings, we should agree on things. So the, now, right now is brick. If you like brick, we're perfectly fine doing that. We don't have any, you know, special interest on changing it.
Well, to me, brick is much more Sag Harbor picture. Sag Harbor had a brick works. Lots, there are lots of brick things around Sag Harbor.
Excuse me, excuse me, board members. Excuse me. Guys, can one person speak at a time, just because it's impossible to hear all of you speaking at once? And then the audio picks up every little thing that the board members are saying. I'm sorry. From a Zoom perspective, if one person could speak at a time, then everyone can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're just, so all this can be verified if you guys.
I think that's like visit, because we're not looking at current comprehensive pictures of the existing condition. We're sort of assuming that things to be true, and I think that's put you in a difficult.
Right. And I'll go back and visit the house again.
I'd like to go back to my original request in that we've had the renderings. But on the old house, I think it's best to do it right on plans and put what the, you know, what it is you're going to use and all of that information. We really, you can't, we don't normally, you know, pass something based on a rendering. It's gotta be in the plan. So that's what I would like to see on the original.
Okay.
I agree with every, all the comments.
So you're saying that preparing, sorry, that so preparing like a front elevation with exactly the same materials, well, and side elevations, I guess. This is the final document that is gonna make us all happy, because we're on the same page, that we're keeping exactly what it is, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so the best thing to do is meet with Zach, photo document the existing building, and then, and then be very specific on the areas where there's questions about what the materials are going to be, et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Yep. Okay, that's perfect. But again, we need to have, I need to have, like I carry the addition, that this is okay, because I, you know, I need to be clear. What is it right now?
The issue regarding the addition, I think it's two things. There's outstanding differentiation on ceiling, on roof height. But also, I think there's a question that we're not really clear, where are you going to use what material? And that's why I asked you to specify that before, because.
The facade?
On the facade.
We'll make sure that's clear.
Okay, so, so let's recap with the conversation. Yeah, let's recap on the conversation about this, because now we have to decide, because this, changing the materials was something that you requested. Because you wanted to have ivy on that volume. In order to have ivy, it's better having it on stone. So we can have singles, but then we don't have the ivy.
Let's recap.
So what is, what is your preference?
The fact was, we were looking at sightlines, and we were concerned about the fact that this addition protruded out. And that was visible. And you decided that you want to do a different material than the rest of the siding of the original house or a lot of the addition. And so that distinction made the extension more discernible, more obvious. So we were trying to, you wanted to use stone, talk to us about Italy and all that sort of stuff. And our response was, well, if that's the material that you want to use, shroud it, because we don't think it's consistent. And Sag Harbor, as Judith said to you, is not some place where stone is common to our construction or architecture, because we don't have a lot of it. It's not, it's not connected.
So it's the same, it's the same as stone, huh? Same as stone. We're talking about the same as stone. We never pick a new material.
Same stone as what's found? Same stone as what's found. And the only.
Of the, of of the basement, of the of the few feet that we have in the basement, it's same as stone, huh, so just to, yeah.
So then that goes back to. Okay, so I'm just gonna finish this point, thank you, Carrie. So I'm just gonna say that, so so that seems to be. The stone that you're referring to in your material examples here. That you want to use on on the wall, before you said it was granite. I don't know, this looks more like field stones than granite, so I I'm not sure.
So maybe you don't have that updated version, but the updated version, the last one, it says that it's exactly the same as stone. And maybe the picture is not. Exactly the same, it's because I didn't find a better one, but I will make sure that I do, take a picture of the right foundation and do that, but. It's exactly the same as stone, we don't want to change it. So done, that is, that shouldn't be a concern, it's exactly, exactly the same as stone.
Okay, I've I've been reminded quite appropriately that we should open this up for discussion and comment from the general public. Is there anybody from the general public who'd like to comment on this?
Make up.
Is there anybody remotely who would like to comment on this, please speak so we can see your picture? Okay. I move that we close the public discussion, can you get a second on that?
So I, I don't feel I have, we have enough answers, but. I I do, we have all the answers here, I mean, what is the solution on this addition, would, are we keeping the grain, are we keeping the stone, no, I, do we have an answer? I I I I don't understand. All right.
We'll discuss that and we'll um. We'll disable this application until the next meeting, we'll have that to you for us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll set up the meeting, I'll have, I'll have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to table two oh seven, Madam Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Did we close the public hearing?
No.
Uh, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Close it, reopen it every time you want.
We have to.
Oh, that's right, we have.
No, because they have, they have, they have to come back, too, and we have others.
So we table, okay.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
So the next is uh ten High Street, anybody here?
Open the public hearing on this and then we are going to um return for.
The next meeting. So so that's all we have to do. I'll make a motion to open the public meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Now we need a motion table till the table.
That's that's the correct word, right, table, we don't want to adjourn, okay, I'll make a motion, table.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to, we open again?
Second.
Now I need a motion to table till the.
Okay.
April thirtieth.
Just twelve Union?
Twelve Union, table, go. Make a motion. He was ready.
So move.
I'll second.
Are we still, okay.
No, we're here. So move to table.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so I'm moving to table. It's been seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye, we got it, yay.
Okay, so we've, we've done both of these, right?
They both adjourn.
Alrighty.
Hi, good evening, board. I'm Katie Frank from Streetville, D C, representing the owners of Blood Fifty Four Redwood.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
So our clients purchased the property in September in place, they would like to build a different house, so we are here seeking a modification to the estate of the property. I'm going to hi, the board, we have two, we are checking the purchase, we'll let them take you through the plans and then have you answer any questions.
This is historic or no?
No.
No. And it was. Okay. It was a very modern building that we approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and now, right, and now we're coming up with a different design altogether. So we really only need to focus on this.
So the uh the original home that was designed was much more modern and contemporary, they looked like rectangular um shipping containers. So they wanted to bring the house back to a more transitional uh architecture uh with the roof lines that are reminiscent of the fabric of the neighborhood and. With uh seven gable roofs and dormers, so the new house is now of a one and a half story, again with gable roofs. And dormers, the the portion of the second floor, the new, the new uh house is also smaller cricket square footage. The owner didn't want the biggest house in the neighborhood and on the street, they wanted the scale to be appropriate to um the community. So we were uh very diligent, we complied with all the current rules, the house that was approved was from old toes and was a lot larger. The mass was bigger, the roof, the plank, great planes were different.
Yep.
Um, so we conform and uh.
Okay. How does this square footage of the old compare with the new?
We are possibly two thousand thirty.
I I can't get an idea of the scale here.
I'm not.
What is the thought behind making? Those two towers. Like square?
There's a short parapet wall, um, we'd like the double height space with the the clapboard with the deep shadow line. And um I wanted the that primary uh focus of the entrance square when you you enter the driveway to be a focal point. Uh, when we had the dormers, it was too many triangles, it was fuzzy and then. I like the uh triple gable, all the same scale with the tall dormers to give it some rhythm.
There's a pitch on the back of it, yeah. Bigger out of scale with these little guys.
It's like they're covering. Yeah, they're covering the door. I've never seen it.
I guess just. My aesthetic opinion is, I just don't love it. Um, it feels less of a single family home than it kind of looks like townhouses put together. Um. And I know that's not what it is. Um. Oh, no, it's a strange design, and I can't seem to wrap my head around it. No offense.
I had the same reaction, Meg, when I when I saw it also. The the rectangle, the two rectangular parts there that are that are covering the. The little dormers. Uh, I I don't know, I just.
I wonder if it would help it to somehow differentiate. For instance, the central um.
Doorway, like.
Yeah, now, or the, but but there there are three little cottagey shaped pieces. And perhaps if the middle one were somehow different, maybe taller. Um, I don't know what, something so that it doesn't go boom, 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 and because. Of course, it's a rendering and they're not always flattering, but it it has the feeling of a public building, like a place where you go to see your cardiologist. And um.
Okay.
And and so if something can can soften it a little somehow.
So so I think, I think. You know, the village has a lot of houses. That were built upon and extended. And. Zach very often calls them quirky. This is, this is very.
Looks like.
Stand standardized. I think it's with the word I'm trying to look at. And and so. I I I think a word is funkier. You know, less, less structure. So. The the, it looks like the dimensions of the of those three. Dormers or those three entrances or in the front are exactly the same. Maybe if, maybe if they had different depths, right, or. Different, different facade treatments. Or.
The rhythm of the architecture and these objects um. Uh, uh, I have a a pilaster sort of uh mask that wraps around the house, so these recesses, there's a lot of depth here. Because I didn't want the house to feel so flat, I wanted to have some unit scale. So all of these are very undulating, it's not a boring house, when when you come in here to the to the driveway, you're focusing on this, these elements. And with the landscaping and the trees here, it sort of conceals that thing, the the rhythm um is completely intentional. Not to copy asymmetric architecture that might have been here for hundreds of years.
What are you saying, Chris?
What do I think?
Yeah.
Got a townhouse feel. When you look at it.
It's it's funny, but the uh. The lower picture, which is, I assume, the the backside.
That's what they call it, the front yard, because it faces the water.
The faces into the water, it has a little bit more um. I don't know what the word is, character. Uh, it's.
Well, it's not all the same.
Yeah, it's not all the same, and so it it's uh. I would. I like the back better than the front, is what I'm saying. Um, but because I do think uh. Yeah, townhouse. For the front.
The three, also the three rooms are single rooms, it's just a twelve room ceiling, they're not two stories, so to keep the mass of the house um low. That's what created these these three peaks and those small ones.
Just out of curiosity, why the parapets and no, why not just gable the ends?
There there were too many gables, uh, and it didn't, I, it didn't look good. And then, you know, the height, the the strength course and everything's course on the house, so this height is exactly the same pilot, so these are the lower windows. Because it's a a one story room, and then in the back, we're able to have the couple of bedrooms looking at you. So the the scale is bigger in the back, I'm just trying to keep everything very level front, because it's only one story. Which contrasts with these guys, and you can do the same thing here.
The people, we have these people, their opinions.
Okay. Well, well, we're rolling this over, is there anybody in the audience, either um present or electronically connected that would like to make a comment on this design?
Use that as the roof line.
And then also, in the neighborhood, there are some new contemporary houses, let me just throw it around here, it's right here.
Yes.
It has much taller peaks um uh and. The 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 scale is much taller, they must have been approved before this house. Um, a lot of flat roofs, a lot of very oxi element. And sort of Kate Todd-esque style houses, so we we wanted to be somewhere in between.
Yeah, I have it, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes, I'm a, I'm a.
Can you just um introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Greg Luke Meyer, I um. Am a neighbor across the street. And as you're talking about this, none of us can see what the house looks like. And so it's very difficult.
Hold on one moment, if you look now, you can see.
It's so tiny that it's.
Okay, hold on, I can try to zoom in as much as I can.
Do you want to bring that thing forward?
Yeah, let's bring it forward. Can we bring that forward closer to the spring, uh screen, screen? Carrie's trying to enlarge it, but it's still hard to see further.
I think, can you see it now?
Yes, vaguely, it's a little fuzzy. Thank you, Carrie.
That's great.
Just drop it down a bit.
That's good.
So Mr. Luke Meyer, that's, the top is the front and the and the bottom is the back.
Yes. I guess, I guess in looking at this, I don't understand what those two towers are.
Okay.
They um, it don't make a whole lot of sense.
To tell them what they tell.
It's a dormer, it's a.
It's in front of the dormer.
With a parapet at the base, so there is a a pitched roof behind a false parapet of of cladding.
To a certain extent, the house. The rendering makes the house look huge, as if it were something over in Southampton on on acres and acres. But it may simply be the scale.
And what was originally approved for the property.
What is the square footage?
This is forty five, forty, less than forty five.
So the G F A of the approved structure was over six thousand, this, what we're proposing today is four thousand five hundred seventy.
Because, I don't know, back in the day.
So it has, it has to have a public hearing.
Yeah, we're in.
I think the way you can solve it up.
Okay, we had some of the ins and outs.
Is just make it a shed roof and bring it right to the, similar to the back.
What's the back?
I don't think, I think you're the only one.
What, are you saying this is a parapet that meets. Occupancies that someone can use this parapet, or this is just a.
It's just so that the side.
Falls from.
Right, okay, all right, yeah.
No, I know what's happening.
Yeah, no, I know, but it falls behind in highs, that was like the situation.
I know, it's just a funnel, it's just a big uh.
Okay.
It just carries it up.
It's one of the best parts of the house, it really is.
Whoops.
It's great.
He loves it.
And just to remind the board, what was approved was essentially a a square stone from the front, so this is much um, much, much different.
What was approved, does anyone?
These boards changed, so.
But it's 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 different, I mean, we approved it, it was modern, it was, it was contemporary, whatever you call it.
Different, different designs.
And different, and we have some of those houses are. Becoming more popular throughout the village. But they're very different, they're very unique, and 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 this shows. Different levels, different masses, different things. And this is just the opposite, this is very structured. Right, so so that's what's catching us off guard, you've gone from kind of almost free form to to.
And it's intentionally structured, every room is symmetrical, every view in this house aligns with window and light. There is a very serious intention to keep the rhythm of these masses consistent for this architecture.
We've gone from Peter Max to Brooks Brothers, right here.
Very, it's a tailor.
So.
That's true, tailor house.
It looks.
I love your, I love architecture poetry. So uh, so you gave me two new ones today.
What is, what is the material?
It's copper, it's it's copper, it's a channel reveal that they cut. And it's it's painted, the the color of the house. Isn't, yeah, is this white color?
It didn't work, actually.
I have, of course, the window frames of roofing.
The roofing is cedar, or, yes.
It's a cedar, it's the the weathered cedar. And the window frame, the window frames are. This bronze colored metal to complement the, the cedar. And then the paint is. A, a white color with a touch of the, that took gray.
Maybe. Maybe this could be somewhat mitigated by. Taking a little structure out of even the landscaping. Everything is balanced here. Right? You think you could do maybe, I mean, you, you've got two, whatever they are, let's call them green giants. Everything is exactly the same, the same flowers, the same. Maybe you could do some offsetting of some trees and in front of some of the facades where there's not windows.
In the front.
In the front.
Yeah.
Well, we.
Destiny's made.
We can, we can be plantings. Again, tailored and clipped cut surrounding the house. Because of the rhythm of the architecture and the, we have a lot of more free form plantings on the perimeters. Here with the flowering trees, the loose. Lower plantings. And then this, all the side plants are red cedar, they're all loose and more organic.
They're there.
To deal with the natural weapons by the wood front. So most of it's just black green space. More, it's just a clipped hedge.
Alright, so do we, this is, this is a public hearing, right? So we've kind of given you our thoughts on this. And, and we're going to go back and do a review in the future. But you, you've got a sense of, of, of what our feeling is here, right?
So you're saying we're not going to move forward today on this?
Well, do we always move forward from a public hearing to an approval?
We don't. We should come back.
I think we need some emendations to this plan.
I think we're in a stalemate.
Yeah, because we all seem to agree that. Something needs to be done, but we don't know what.
Well, it's up to the client. Like, you know, you, like we said, we've, you've heard us, so. You can come back with changes based on what you've heard. Whatever you want to submit.
Is there anyone else from the public who wants to be heard?
I do have a question regarding the, the landscape. A Japanese maple as such. I, I feel that that might be inappropriate for the architecture. Do you need to see something that's that, or does it need somewhere in the middle?
Whenever.
Whatever, whatever.
We look forward to the, to, to your return and.
We don't need it as Japanese maple. Like, we don't need that plant. If, if you are against that plant, then we don't need that plant.
Right. And. Do we have a landscape plan with this?
For one question, you are the same architect due to the original submission, right?
How many?
You're not, oh, okay, alright.
Is there?
I appreciate that you're going for balance and rhythm and symmetry. I, I love symmetry. I think there is a more attractive way to get there. And I mean that with the most respect. I, I also love that you're making, this is a one story house.
It's not easy to do.
I can imagine.
It was not easy to do.
And that it's much smaller than the original house design. That's good.
Yeah, and I think my, my biggest thing is I just. It really feels like a townhouse community. And if you could make it feel more like a single family home with charm. Like most of Sag Harbor does, then. I think we can come to an agreement.
Can we appreciate all the input on the board? Can we just review shortly so that when we come back, it's a little bit more productive? I heard a lot about the, the dormers and how we're well, a fan of the dormers. Is that, is that fair to say? You would like those changed, either to maybe.
On the front.
Only on the front, right?
Yes. We're not against dormers. We're against the fact there are three symmetrical cookie cutter dormers.
So on, on that point, one, one suggestion that was made, but was not embraced.
Was the shed.
Was the shed doing?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that gives you that same flatness. But just.
The same height, I think, is open for. Cause the, the, you know, the pilaster.
Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you guys?
And then this three triangle structures just being a little too matching.
Symmetrical.
Was there anything else? That you could, any feedback that you can give us now?
I think the colors are great and. Go ahead, bud.
I said, I think that there's a difference between symmetry and repetitiveness.
Yeah.
Yes, just want to see.
A, a, as I mentioned, I, I think the back is better.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, designated rooms and floor plan. I'm just trying to see what's in those three.
Those are bedrooms, I thought.
The, the rooms are labeled.
I'm on eight, A one twenty one. Eight, A one twenty oh? The garage, yes, okay. So they're very different uses.
That is what they're gonna, they could have a bocce ball room in there.
No, I'm just saying, sometimes, sometimes if you have a different use, you'd make a room a little larger, a little smaller, a little difference internally. And then externally, that would be expressed, that's all I'm saying. I, I mean, I agree with that.
I got your reasoning.
You know what I'm saying? Like if this was gonna be. A. Primary measure. If it came out a little further, so they could, you know. So it's gonna be a second, it's gonna be.
Do we need to close this public hearing? Well, we, we close the public and then my, 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 we close the public meeting and then we'll table.
Well, the public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing, yes.
Yep, and table the, table the matter to the next, to the next meeting.
And I move to table.
Second. Second.
Aye.
Doctor, do you have any comments?
Public hearing's over.
Oh, he left.
No, 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 dear. Uh, no comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm losing track, that was one fifty four.
Yeah, we're down to eighty eight.
Okay. Anyone here for eighty eight Redwood Drive?
I think I did.
I was.
Oh, no.
I was motion to close.
I think I did.
And I, and I seconded.
Yeah.
I tabled.
And who's here, sir?
Okay, good evening, good evening, board members.
May you have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll show up in the public hearing on eighty eight Redwood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, good evening, board members. I'm John Willen from Stellamont, Rhiannon Architects in Bridgehampton. Regarding eighty eight Redwood Rose, we came to you an informal session, maybe all a while back. This evening, we have his role in our office, Paul Durham. He is on the Zoom, so he's wanting to share the screen and show you images. And Michael Lamont, who is part of Stellamont, is here also, and Michael will be presenting. The application and answering your questions. And I, I have as well, I have some images on the boards here in case you want to take a closer look at anything. You have all of the existing photographs, existing plans. We have landscape plan, we have the proposed plans, renderings, that sort of thing. So, so with that, if I may hand it off to Michael Lamont.
We'll see him on the screen.
Good evening, members of the board. Can you hear me okay? Michael Lamont from Stellamont, Rhiannon Architects in Bridgehampton. This is, application is for eighty eight Redwood. This will be the third time we've been to the ARB. We came for a work session first and then we came to the last meeting. And then it was noticed that we were a couple hundred square feet over three thousand. So we had to come back in a notice situation. So the application is. It's, we're replacing an, an existing house. It's about twenty seven hundred square feet or so. The, the proposed house, the allowable GFA on this lot is thirty three fifty. The house that we're proposing is thirty one fifty two, including two hundred square feet for mechanical. So the effective GFA is twenty nine fifty two. So we had at the first two meetings, just to refresh your memory, there weren't any comments from the first meeting. We had what I believe to be unanimous support. In the second meeting, there were no comments as well. And prior to that, we were at the Harbor Committee three times. We worked with the Harbor Committee. We got unanimous support from the Harbor Committee. And we went to the ZBA to have a. A variance for a small piece of roof, roof at the front, which we thought was important for the architecture. So that was, we had unanimous approval for that as well. So we're here again tonight with the same design. Looking for your support and approval.
So you want to take us to the design quickly, just to refresh?
Has the design changed?
The design has not changed since the last, like I said, this, this would be with a third time we've been to the ARB with basically this, this, with exactly the same application. So the front of the building, so we've, we've got the overall application by replacing the history of the, the history of the project actually is. There's an existing house that we investigated. It's non FEMA compliant, it's non compliant to side yard setbacks. So we investigated renovating and lifting the existing house. And it just wasn't, as you see what, from the existing photos that are there. It just wasn't, it wasn't possible. It just wasn't a viable project and it just didn't make a lot of sense. So the owner came to us and we designed a house that's. Proposed four bed, it's an existing four bedroom house. Like I said, it's about twenty seven hundred square feet or so. And it's existing four bedrooms, it's proposed four bedrooms. The owner has two grown children. So he's looking to have, you know, space that he can have his family with him. And we went to, so basically volumetrically, the site is the, basically the, the house, we pulled the house. Working with the Harbor Committee, they requested us to pull the house back to the thirty foot setback from the street. Which created a lot of challenges. But the upside of that is there's a substantial amount. Currently, the lawn on this property and a lot of the adjacent property goes down pretty close to the wetland line. And there's also, you know, an existing sanitary system, nonconforming sanitary system. There's no stormwater management right now. So the new application, we've pulled the new house back to the, basically the thirty foot setback line from the street. We've re-vegged a substantial amount of the property, almost the entire lawn on the water side has been re-vegged. And working with the Harbor Committee, and they were very pleased with the re-veg, the amount of re-veg that's happening there. A new IA system that's pulled as far from the wetland line as possible toward the street. All the stormwater is controlled in dry wells. And like I said, the house, the allowable GFA is thirty three fifty, we're about, we're thirty one fifty two. Including the two hundred square feet that's given for mechanical. So like I said, it's an effective GFA of twenty nine fifty two. Volumetrically, the house, we spent a lot of time looking at this house, how to design this house. Because, you know, there's pyramid setbacks, there's side yard setbacks. And by pulling it to the street, we had street front setback. So conceptually, the, the, the idea was that, that we sort of placed this and designed this house to have minimal glazing on the sides, to be respectful of the neighbors. Like I said, the house is pulled back substantially from, from where it is now. And also where the adjacent house is going to the west. Like I said, minimal glazing, there is a deck on the second floor on the east side, but it's narrow. It was, it was really a, a result of having to pull the house back to meet the side yard pyramid setback. So we, we included a deck on the east side that's not large enough to furnish. So we don't believe that it's, you know, it has any impact on the neighbors. But it is part of the architecture and allows the bedroom to, to basically get outside.
Balances view, yeah.
Yeah, and then. So we, so on the front side, we went to the ZBA, cause it was important to us that, to have a, a consistent roof line. And they agreed with that. And we have this sunscreen, cause we're basically facing the, the street side is the south side. So we were looking to get as much daylight in the house as possible. So the louvered screen on the front is basically a part of, we think it really helps the overall scale. And it also limits the summer sun, allows the winter sun in as the sun is lower. We think it helps the scale. And volumetrically, like I said, we placed the, the house to work with the, all of the available sort of three dimensional volume of the setbacks. While, while giving, putting, you know, placing the bedrooms, having a sensible plan, a very compact plan. And, and I think still sort of being architecturally rigorous.
Thank you. Any comments?
It's pretty, I like it.
I like it too.
I'll accept the motion, I do too.
It's a public hearing. It's a public, yeah.
Well, I thought we opened the public hearing. Oh, then we have to close the public hearing. Alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One meeting and I'm rusty. Can we?
Anybody?
Any other comments from the public regarding this, this project? Present or connected by Zooms? Okay, a move that we close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor? Now, can I take a motion that, that we.
Motion to accept eighty eight Redwood.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Got it.
Take care.
Yeah, thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
It's, it's the big job though. No.
So.
Much consent agenda, I'm on the wrong page. So we're good, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So. Can I make, can I make a motion to accept the consent agenda matters? I was one person who went and checked them out and be okay.
Can you say approve instead of accept, please?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
For the record, I was here too.
Motion to approve, make actually.
Okay.
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, so we move on to page three.
When it's gonna open up? I can't wait.
Okay, new business. Who is here for thirty one Long Island Everest? Anyone here? Please come to the front, identify yourself.
I probably don't have to introduce myself, but I'm Dave Scamore, you probably know my father. Oh, let's get to the pictures. It's easy, you know, we're all about history, I don't give any of that, so just. Um, before I came, this has been on Facebook and they say, or, they were, you paid for two years. But I did hear someone said make it a little lower, so we revised it today as of. Submit. So I revised it today, it should make it eighteen smaller.
You mean eighteen lower?
I don't have enough to everybody. Those are the higher versions. And I actually liked the lower version, I was gonna argue with you, but I kinda like it. So I did it and I took eighteen inches off, lowered everything and it kinda looks nice.
I have one other question.
Can I show you all of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the one thing that I, when I was reviewing it today. The, the rendering of the drawing of the facade in the back showed nothing but the texture, just a flat wall.
Yeah, it's just this concrete, that's where it was before. It's just, we can't have access to the back, because we're right up against the.
Parking lot.
Can't have any doors or anything.
Not even fire escape doors back there?
I, they wouldn't let me, I mean, as far as the key span, you know, I'm bringing with them for twelve, thirteen years. I have four, I have four exits, four exits in the building. I, they wouldn't let me. I mean, as far as the key span, you know, I'm bringing with them for twelve, thirteen years. I have four, I have four exits, four exits in the building. Use your luck, please, while you're playing. There's one on each corner, there's one in the front. There's actually five. So there's so many exits that you really don't, you know, as far as fires.
I have a question. Uh, I've heard through the grapevine that you're not allowed to have a.
Convenience store.
You're not allowed to ask those questions. There's nothing to do.
Just curious.
Okay, so we um, we're looking at the aesthetics here.
Right, so the zoning issue now. So, but my 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 only point was.
No, there's no convenience store. You got suit, so we're thinking. We could get that very clear. As far as the use, it will be illegal use that's permitted in the code book.
Yeah, I think it's unfair.
I totally do. Nothing I can do, guys. Well, I'm gonna sue the village. That's what everybody else does. We don't do that. We're from the town. We're from the town. We don't wanna do that.
So it it's just anything that you can do from the backside, and I know it's the backside.
I have the as-is, you know, give me like a Superman navel to make sure this is as close as as is, yes. Yeah, this this detail will be, this roof detail will be, will be all the way around.
Right.
Alright, so Mr. Chair. This is a new building, so. But it it presents itself as a replica of an old one. So I think that's something the board should. Consider that it's a kind of a concern. In other words.
They, the, I have to do as like, that's what they suit, that's what the courts determine. I can't do anything but what they're pushing it right here.
You, you're saying you, this is the only building you could design? I I just didn't know.
The village gave us what it said we as like. Is what we had. So this is the same footprint, same height, same window layout. Everything we had. Was the tower because it makes it look like from shopping mall to a nice little thing. And it's eighty thousand dollars to build that. And, you know.
Again, we don't get into that. Your responsibility. I'm just asking about, from a design standpoint, which is what this. And at these brackets, which are, I mean, it's it's kind of replicating. Is that what you're saying was there and you are forced to rebuild it?
No, no, we kind of dusted up a little bit. The tree circle for was pretty, you know.
Really, not all that attractive. Gotcha. I'm just, because. Okay, so the village is not Disneyland. So this board really focuses on preserving historical architecture, but not reconstructing it. From scratch because the. The uh average customer. Leaving the post office and strolling down the street. Might immediately think that that's been there for a hundred and twenty years. And that's not a, that's not a good look, okay? Because that's not what is a desirable uh objective in the historic district or in the downtown. I know this is not in the district. Because you'd have to answer to other sorts of issues. But it just tends to re-line. It's seemingly reproducing some old building that's been there for years, except it's not.
The reason that they're, the reason that, you know, you feel that way is because they're 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 required and entitled to replace. A pre-existing non-conforming structure. So they're trying to replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure in place and in kind. And that's what they're struggling with when they're presenting this to you.
Right, okay. Try to understand that because it sort of looks like a. I don't know.
Well.
Were you, were you around eighteen years?
No, I was not.
I like, I actually like the design because I do remember what was there. I also remember in this area, of course, this was uh. Where the train, can you, the train.
Well, you see, this, this, I think it looks like a station.
Yeah, I like it and I like that idea. I'm I'm okay with that.
But do you have to re-race it from your mind if you see it? Because it's.
It's just.
The only thing good coming out of this for me. That's about it, besides eight years.
I, I like it. I think, I I like the clock tower aspect to it.
I lowered it eighteen inches, so that I think that was a good compromise. I actually like it lower. See, it actually looks a little nicer. We compared the two.
I mean, I know this is just a rendering, but I think it's clear based on the materials that it's not a historic structure.
Yeah, um, what is it made out of? Is this?
This is gonna be, it's, this, this is stucco down below and this is what we have before. This is the siding, the tongue and groove siding. Mad wood with the black ones. It's kind of a look that's pretty much over the houses. It's nice. So you have a black frame, white siding. And then a stucco in the bottom.
So Mr. Mr. Shavoni, that's probably it because I'm not sure I officially opened the public hearing.
Oh, oh. Sorry, I probably pushed you ahead.
I don't think it's a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Like I say, it's been on Facebook for so long, everybody loves it. I have no complaints.
So, so the only thing I'd I'd say is. When I looked at this today.
I wanted to show you the old building, so. View center.
So basically, Dave, you're gonna come back for a public hearing. Next, whenever we can do that.
Yeah, I remember it now. Yes, the same exact footprint, exactly. Well, actually, six inches less than the street. I left, I left another six or eight inches in the front for a bigger sidewalk.
Can we see?
So what I'm gonna ask.
Dog is exactly the same. The windows, the layout, the wall, everything is the same, it's just new. You can't see it, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Had you thought of any plantings or anything?
This side, all the landscaping is on the two sides. I'm gonna give you a random. Of course, there's not much, basically, it was there. There's a rounded parking lot. There's gonna be all bushes and plants.
So you'll bring that next time.
If you wanted to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so what we'd like from you is, yes, a landscaping plan.
I'll, I'll render this out with landscape.
We, we'd like.
Renders are better for you. Isn't it easier? There's no more work for me.
So, so for instance, here. On this planet, it looks like it's a board and bat. Yeah, so there's little ways that you can make. Maybe something, a different color that's not quite so draft.
Well, it's because of the color, you know, the color pink is not the best. And I did, I did it myself with like a program.
The other, the other thing that I would suggest that uh is when you come back to the public hearing with all the things that we suggested, yeah.
A better, better color a little bit on there.
And, and I I really only see one sign. So if.
No, if you, if you see the sign, it'll have three signs, I think.
But, but have the signs so that we, they say what you want them to say.
We don't know what they're gonna say, yeah.
Well, come up. Well, I thought that this was like.
It's gonna be the corner shops. I mean, that's what we're gonna call it, where the shops are in there. I don't know.
Might be the barber.
Have their own sign.
So you're only gonna, going to submit what you're gonna put there. So once you give.
Right. Okay.
So everything's there, so I just do a color with the landscaping, right?
So the next time where they could come in front of us is April thirteenth for a public hearing.
Motion to table.
Can I ask Liz a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
It says corner shops. That sign would be okay. We should, like, if he, if that comes back and that's what it says again. It's okay to approve that it's corner shops is the name of the building.
It's about the size of the sign.
Could be office shops. I mean, I don't know, you know, it's gonna be, it's very limited on what is allowed there, I mean, you know.
When he gets a tenant, the tenant will come back just for the sign, right? Like they do.
Right, tenants will, but. So this, this sign won't be here. Is what I'm, I'm saying. This main, this main sign will not be here then.
No, it will.
It will be, but it's not, we're not gonna know what it says. I'm gonna put signage like you most people put. So it'll be that size of a thing, but it's not gonna be. Whatever it says on it, I'm gonna put signage.
Okay, no, I understand.
So you're not gonna call it corner shops.
I really do have other shops.
It doesn't change the way to the permit clause, not the people doing it. So either way, I'm gonna leave the sizes the way it is. The sizes are set. That's it. It can't make it bigger than this. That will leave it. And then you can go, we'll decide on what.
So let me ask you this. I don't see entrance doors.
You got one here.
Right there, right.
We got one here, one on this side here.
I see, okay, alright.
There's four on there if you go on.
Fine, alright. No, I mean, I thought this was a center hall.
It's kind of like setback, so it's kind of, otherwise it's some blood flush.
I don't see anything, so they're around the corner.
There's actually two on this side and two on this side. Five, five altogether.
Alright.
And we have five or six stores in before. And it's, we had five, we divided, we just. No, we had six and we divided them into five altogether. And it's the same, actually, it's six inches smaller. That's important. Or six inches less in the street, so I make a bigger sidewalk. I tried stretching it out, you know, I don't say over the years, but this is exactly the footprint, less six inches in the front.
Alright.
Make a sidewalk because I, the reason why is I bumped this out six inches. A little bit because I wanted to bring some texture to it, that's all. Motion to table thirty-one Long Island Avenue, the next public hearing on the thirteenth.
Yeah, I can hear it now, bud.
Will you say tissues? Well. Yeah, he probably should. Alright, so is someone here to?
I think she's ready to go.
Looks like we have somebody there. Please identify yourself.
Uh, my name is Denise Stern and I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owners, Elizabeth Bradley and John Goroy. Um, they own Chute Glover Street, um, which tends to have the Benjamin Glover House on it. So it's a rather significant historic structure that was built in eighteen oh five, I believe, or not. Um, and I'm happy to say we're here tonight for a historic rehabilitation restoration, not renovation or condition. These are, I don't, when.
I, I have one question. First of all. Looking at these plans, they're very detailed. You certainly showed examples of what was the problem. And and in in your diagrams, you identify exactly what's gonna be changed. The. Diagrams are so specific. I'm not sure if you're just showing, for instance. Rock damage on the baluster base or that you plan to replace the entire baluster too. So, so I think most of this is kind of a Zach issue, but. So, so uh. I I'm hoping for your. Can you hear us?
Boston, are you able to hear us?
Very badly, Denise, but.
It's because it's.
This has a main street address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you. I think generally, if you don't mind, if you could, if you could just walk with through the plan.
Share my screen, let's see.
The general question is really, if pictures that are shown. For each element that needs to be replaced, how much of it needs to be replaced?
Yeah, that's a really great question. I think, for example, um, you know, a picture would show, let's say, uh, uh. A storm sash that is damaged. Obviously, the whole sash would be replaced. You know, you can't just do patchwork. Uh, the same thing with the uh, um, handrail on the. On the back porch. You know, the whole handrail needs to be replaced. You can't just patch it. So, um. You know, we identified where the damage is, but the intent is. That particular element will be replaced entirely. If it's a, if it's a baluster on on the porch, um. For trailing, you know. One baluster could be replaced, not necessarily the the whole entire. But with a handrail, I would say definitely it needs to be replaced in its entirety.
Williams, were you asking about specific, a specific number that I can help you with?
No, I think I've got the answer I wanted. So it's it's pretty much. What's rational and practical and. And it makes a lot of sense.
I think he means like which element, like if it's a piece of casing, it's gonna be the whole casing.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
That makes sense.
Right, okay.
Explain to me more as a layperson, the the most substantial element that we could not keep. Um, is one of the windows on the house and, um, so maybe Bob, then if you could focus on that. And I know there's a picture of the damage to the window and explains why it can't be replaced. The builder was able to find a replica of the same window. With same exact elements with this and the same exact materials that it is today.
Correct, that's the window facing, um, uh, Glover Street. Uh, it's. It has rot and it needs to be replaced in in its entirety. The replacement is going to be. Essentially exactly the same materials, the same mountain dimensions, single glaze, uh, single glazing. So it's gonna be, you know, exactly the same, uh, product.
Uh, if you could bring us the specs on that.
Yes, actually, it is a, um. A Marvin window, uh, we attached, I suppose, um, on page. On page A zero zero one. The drawing that's there is actually a shop drawing, uh, from Marvin. I mean, from a distributor Marvin window, so, uh, that is actually a shop drawing. But that's Marvin is probably not. Uh, single glaze, it's probably double glaze, right? It it is single glaze. It is really? Yes, wood, single glaze, uh, with very thin mountains.
So, I guess my question would be, on that say page A zero zero one. Number thirteen is labeled rot damage at kitchen door. There's a photograph of the entire ladyhood window.
The bottom, the bottom part is where it's damaged. Uh, can you see the uh, the dash line? Photograph, yeah.
Well.
Damages at the sill.
Uh, actually, I'm looking on page A zero zero one dot zero zero.
Right.
Which is rare notes. And so up at the top of that page, number thirteen is labeled rot damage at kitchen.
at kitchen nook window, and it's simply a picture of the entire four window sashes. Next to it, to the left, is number fourteen, proposed new wood window replacement at breakfast nook to match existing, but again, it's an elevation of all four window sashes. And so that's not labeled or specified as to what's being replaced.
Uh, so again, I think, you know, consistently with, what we discussed earlier, the rot is mostly at the bottom of the windows.
Okay.
But the windows would be replaced in their entirety.
Okay, so that would be a reason why I would like to go out and see the job, because, uh, these are wooden. I don't think wooden rot in parts of them then naturally leads to replacing all of them. Because wood is easily repaired, and so, but again, it depends what the element is. If, if it's not of significance to the house, it's of less consequence to the board.
Where is this?
I think it's the, it's also, I might be wrong, but I, I think it's the addition. That kitchen, that kitchen, yeah, was added much later, I mean, it's, I can remember it.
Yeah.
And, and that window is a, it's not an original window to the house, or any.
Right, that's absolutely correct, that is.
It also doesn't really belong to the house.
However, there are other windows that are marked with these dotted lines showing partial rot at the bottom, and I'm wondering if the proposal is to replace those entire windows.
How many windows, I guess what we need, do we have it, Mark?
Are you indicating sills here?
Yeah.
Yes, there are some sills, and, um, we're talking about storm window sashes, not the double hungs, the storm windows on the.
Oh, storm windows.
Really, it's just that one window, that's what I meant.
Okay, that's, and that's where, where is that window, is that that, is that that kitchen?
The note four, when it says storm window sash, uh, you know, those are the places where, uh, we would replace the, the entire, uh, windows, the storm window sash. And then when it says window sill, it's just a sill. But, uh, we didn't find any damage to the double hung windows, which we believe are original.
Okay, so none of those original sashes, except perhaps for the basement windows.
Correct, correct, the basement windows.
Which may be original. In my experience, so I think we should do a, a walk, a walkabout.
Might, might help.
It's, it's totally just the, um, the, the, um, the trim around.
It's just a, uh, sash. Okay.
Okay, we don't care about that.
We care about this, so, and the sill.
I haven't seen a problem with you guys walking the property.
Yeah.
Do you mind doing that, are you available to do that?
Sure, sure, you know, the trucking crew there, also, um, you know.
Oh, that was fun.
The builders, well.
That's great.
Yeah, we'll schedule that next week, if that's agreeable. Okay, just to kind of double check.
Absolutely, this is an important house, and I want to do it right.
Absolutely.
Right.
My clients are committed to that, so.
Do we have any other comments from anybody in attendance, or remote?
It's not.
It's not public, please, it's a public game.
Zach, so are you? If you look at A zero zero one point zero one, like if, are you good with the, it says, it says the, the base at the door surround beyond? Did, that, was that question answered, that it's just replacing that, not the whole column?
Okay, alright.
It's a little ambiguous in certain areas, and like most window work is on storm windows, which are not.
When did they start putting storm windows up, I mean, when did, who invented the storm window?
Somebody, somebody was cold, somebody was cold.
Then you know, we need another window.
I think we should put another layer.
So, can I take a motion that we tabled as folks, to, to post the visit of the contractor Zach and the architect? Can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Who's representing forty-eight Union Street, someone here? We have not seen Anthony in a long time.
I know, we missed him, right?
Yeah, yeah, my goodness.
Too many vacations.
I think the last thing you presented to us is already, the renovation work is done. Almost, okay. So.
It's up on, yeah.
One fourteen.
Oh, okay.
Well, that is one, that means John, I am.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with the photographs here of the existing, um, structure. I guess I gotta introduce myself, yeah. Officially here, Anthony Verminoff, sixty-eight Union Street. Okay, so this is on, uh, forty-eight Union Street, it's just a few houses down to me, it's directly next door to the, uh, to the, uh, Whalers Church. So, basically, uh, I think what we have here is what was once a kind of early nineteenth century Whalers cottage. There's very little of original fabric left in this building. You can see here, there's a shed dormer, um, up on the top, uh, all windows have been replaced, there's like a little picture window with side, um, side lights here, front door is an obviously, uh, recent, uh, condition. Going to, towards the rear, there's this sort of, uh, kind of like they tacked on a little fifties ranch house onto the back there. This little peaked area in the back does contain some old framing in it. It's, so it may have been like a, a barn or something, it was attached to the house at some point in time. But the house, uh, I think at some point had a severe fire, because there's a lot of fire damage and a lot of the old.
So it says in the, that's the register form.
Yeah, you can see it, I mean, it still smells like smoke in some, some parts of the house. You know, this is the side here, uh, so this is, that's a group fifties edition, um, in the front here with the, um, uh, dormer and that porch, and the yard is basically just a plain, open, fully cleared, um, a lot, uh, that's a little more there. The other thing that's kind of interesting about this house is it's a legal two-family house. And it's being, it's currently used as a two-family house, and the current owner intends to keep it as a two-family house. So that really kind of drove how we did the design here, to, um, kind of set it up well for him. The way it is now, he's living in the front part of the house, and the back part of the house is rented out, he wants to switch it around so he can have more of the yard, and he's gonna move it to the back and, um, use the front part as the rental unit. That does present some cha-challenges, because we've got a footprint that can't get any bigger, and we've got, um, you know, he's still twenty-five plus, a little bit under twenty-five hundred square feet to work with, and we've got it would accommodate, you know, two kitchens, bathrooms, bedrooms and stuff. Work five ways in a family house.
Wow.
So, I think probably the drawings you're gonna be most interested in are, um, A three and A four.
Forty-eight ten.
Oh.
So, um, there's a large lens there, if you, they're easier to see, they're. Smaller version of the plans, um, but basically, um, you know, here's the, um, Union Street aside. The idea here is to keep the shed dormer, it's, uh, valuable real estate, so we want to keep that front dormer, but instead of having these two big windows, we're gonna do a three smaller windows. Gonna remove the front porch, um, put on a, a new front door and surround, um, a little, little bit more elaborate than there now, but, um, really kind of keeping a, a fairly simple, um, program.
This is, uh, this is what's proposed up here. Thanks for doing that, because, you know, they proposed that in the existing, right, before and after.
I hope you see what, what's got here. So you'll see, um, on the side here, and this is the, uh, the side, the west elevation, which is the side facing the Whalers Church. Basically, the change here, the house is gonna be the same footprint, about, you know, just about the same footprint, about six inches shorter and six inches wider in the, in the rear, but that's really the only change. What we're doing is, we're pulling up, um, the roof on, you know, the same pitch as the existing, um, back, but going up higher to accommodate a second floor over the rear part of the, um, house. So, yeah, this is the, uh, east elevation. So we've got, you know, here is the existing east elevation, graduated, uh, back up to the strange, the fifties ranch house kind of addition. Uh, so that gets changed with just a long shed dormer, growing up across the top, create that center four. And then, um, the rear elevation, as I mentioned, is we really taking the existing roof pitch, bringing it up, uh, bringing it up here as well, creating a little bit of a, uh, indentation, just create a little bit of a shadow line there in the back elevation, to bring it up a little bit. You know, there's some nice patio doors going in, while he's enjoying his, uh, yard.
That's the south elevation, that's the back. And he can go more to the, um, side.
Eight five is the, um, um, just showing that, uh, detail of the front door, we're gonna do, and removing that, um, that porch, um, not the smart porch, bringing in the new front door and surround.
Anthony, what is the door that's there now, you show it as a six panel, is that new?
Oh, yeah, no, it's got like, yeah, it's, it's.
Oh, just, okay.
It's got, it's got the, the top there.
Yeah, it's like the transparent plastic door, all of those glass things on top, yeah, it's, it's awful. And most of the house is, um, yeah, some of it's on cinderbox, some of it's on, uh, stone, and some of it's on, just on dirt. In fact, the rear part of the house is just on dirt, so the idea is do a new foundation, uh, that rear, um, this, uh, this section of the house here, um, it, it has some old timber framing in it, uh, but that's where the most severe, uh, fire damage is. What we want to do is try to save as much as that, as that, of that as we can, and kind of recreate it decoratively as a dining room ceiling inside. But I think it's about, gonna be about all we can do with that, I mean, here's a section for the dining room. The front part of the house, there's a few, uh, there are a few, uh, ceiling joists that are exposed that are okay, but that's really it. Windows are all new, the, uh, the existing windows are all new, and we're gonna replace them. And, uh, the staircase, even the interior, I mean, that's not, not really your purview, but just, there's no interior trim or staircase or anything like that, of, of, no.
Historic, yeah.
Historic, yeah.
Okay, so one of the new windows. This is the addition now, right? And then this is what, what they want to do, and you, you guys, you're feeling, it looks like the roof is the exact same size as the original house.
The same height.
The, the front part of the roof is, yeah, it's the same height.
They all intersect at the same height.
Correct, yeah.
So that back extension is a little.
Could it come, could it be dropped down a little bit?
Right.
If that whole back, because you're going up, I don't know how many feet, but if that could drop down from the front original portion, then that would help to minimize the impact of it.
But I don't really think it has to drop down that much, right?
No.
Maybe six inches or something.
Just a little bit.
To show a little difference.
Yeah.
Honestly, we can't, we, we can go down a little bit, can't go down much, just because there's kind of, you know, I mean, honestly, there are two eleven by eleven bedrooms up there, it's not a whole lot of program, but, uh, you know, one thing that we was a little bit tricky, is we do have a heavy pyramid law, uh, issue, we did get a variance, but, you know, if, if the perfect world of, we didn't have pyramid law, I would have probably had dormers on both, smaller dormers on both sides. But, uh, because of that, we're right on the property line of the Whalers Church, you know, and that, that sky plate's coming up, we don't have a dormer, uh, or in the east side. We did get a variance, but they were pretty clear that, like, we were pushing it with the variance that we got, so.
So the topography of this property, it's a little lower than where the Whalers Church is, right?
Yeah, it's actually quite a bit lower than. And the property itself has a slight slope to it from west to east.
I think the new design looks nice, very nice.
And you're okay with the height of the addition?
I, um. For two families, yeah.
Will it be seen?
Absolutely, for two families.
Will the back be seen, the, you know, the top of it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're, I mean, honestly, if you're coming down from the, going heading west down Union Street, you'll be able to see that, that side. I mean, you won't see it, you know, uh, from standing straight looking at it, um, I mean, you'll see it a little bit from the, from the parking lot of the, uh, of the Whalers Church, but it's not, you know, it's a narrow property, so there's only, you know, the, the house.
Because it's lower.
Yeah, and the house to the, um, east is a much, much bigger house, as you know, so then that's really gonna block most of that view of that, like this little house, if you'll say.
Yeah, the house right next to it is pretty massive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it, I'm keen.
Um, I like it too, and I thank you for, uh, doing the existing next to the proposed, so that we can just see what you're doing, and I would hope that the, that the ridge line could come down, a- as much as you can do it, I realize it's not much, but any, any amount that it could come down.
That would be great.
Yeah.
That would give you as, as you say that. Well, any other comments? What's your promotion? Was it two, approved?
Well, you're gonna pay one, just, or need to drop it, or can we just write it on there?
Yes, do, do that, yeah, sure, and all, have you submit the, the final drawings, that, you know.
We just gotta write it in, yeah.
Do we?
Right, so let's put it in.
Can we, um, can we say how much it's gonna come down? Or is it two?
If you want me to commit to a number, I could, I could give you nine inches.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, that's fine.
I was correcting lines, I don't.
Alright, that's great, alright, so we'll, we'll add that.
Kind of have that, that in the back.
So we need to write that down.
Pre-workout.
So, so listen, we have to sign the approval, right?
I'll sign it.
Yeah, I'll thank.
No one's second, I'll second.
No, just Megan did.
Don't cry.
She did a lot of approvals, uh, seconding, she was very active in the motions last meeting. So.
You have to write it.
You can't, we can put it into the approval.
Yeah, approval with the nine is taken off.
I'm gonna ask Zach to do that. Just put in the.
Yep.
Okay.
Down here.
So we, we second it, did we vote on it? I don't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
With the nine inches.
With the nine inches off.
Right.
Now, now, while we, while we're finishing up, is there anybody, uh, who can, uh, tell me if I'm right about this? Was there a, in the, if, did anybody talk about that it was a, um, hairdresser, that, that he had the shop there? Is that the house? Okay, good.
That house had a hairdresser?
Ragusa, Ragusa, yeah. Mr. Ragusa.
Okay, while we're waiting. Bring up the, represent for thirty-six Glover. Bring up the rep- do we represent for thirty six Glover? Is there? Please come on up and introduce yourself.
I'm the energy developer, Scott, that's the design builder. You're the master of the doors. And I guess the conclusion, I need to tell you that the young man to your right is someone I work with who got some here.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Twenty years? Who's he trying to?
Me.
Yes, you're not old enough. I was gonna say, what were you, two years old?
You hung around, you hung around with the uh project.
Works on a bunch of things that. Have really made headway in terms of preserving.
Thank you. We agree.
Yes, I agree.
I guess the line.
Regarding the uh the Whalers, uh thirty six Glover Street is um a very special building. And what we are proposing, you can see on A O four in the elevation and in E X O four, the comparison, we're proposing to expand the existing kitchen. And then put the second floor over that kitchen with a connector to the second floors of the house. All the materials are consistent with the rest of the building that was in the house. Same situation. Cedar shaped siding.
That widow's watch is there?
With the what?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been there for a while.
And you're not, and you're not gonna take it away.
It's, I remember when they put that on there, yeah.
Well, they'd like to also talk about what's next door at thirty four Glover Street. And that was once a lowly little building. Now it's under all the steroids and they've baked a lot across the street. Well, I could go on and on.
Right.
But, you know, they have children and grandchildren and they're looking to have a nicer kitchen and then add a bedroom above it. So the history of the proposal.
So is the uh, is it, it's, how far back is it re- is it recessed? Is it?
Okay, let's get after the.
The addition?
The addition is directly above the existing first floor.
So this is.
The only additions.
There already, I got you.
The only addition to the footprint is that uh A O one is that crocheted area. Expanding the kitchen. And then building directly above it, as you'll see on A O two, A O four, for the second floor. And that will cover this new area.
This is the only new stuff.
Sorry, we'll be too far, I think.
But, yeah, it's going up.
And then on the second floor, there'll be a small.
You wanna write that? Yeah, it was in there.
Okay.
Well, he kept the bubble on, which I really. I think there's a, there's proposed and then existing, but they're not.
Yeah, A O one is the floor plan, A O four is the proposed.
There we go.
Elevation, E X O four will sure be existing elevation.
That's what we wanted to see.
So can you see this from the front? Yeah.
So you don't see anything from the front.
Okay, that's pretty amazing.
So going up the second story sits entirely behind the main block of the house, so that when you're looking at it straight on.
Zach, you don't see anything from the road.
Yeah, that's why these are the same. Because that sits back, I see. This is, okay.
Seems like a nice modest addition.
It's very basic, it's very simple. Uh, we first met the Whalers through our friend Guy Davis, the uh house lifter. And um we, the house was literally sinking into the ground. The original historic house, and so what we did was we created um by shoring it and working with Guy, we created a whole new foundation wall.
It is bigger.
But then we clad the foundation wall with the original rubblestone. So you don't see the.
Just dropped my my pen. All the materials will be the same.
Identical.
Is the addition, is the addition as the same height again? Is it the same height?
No, this is the roof right here.
Right here, okay.
Yeah, this is just a pretty little.
Yeah, something, yeah. Okay.
All the setbacks, so that.
And they're keeping the widow's walk.
Well, we're not changing the original house.
Right, well, the widow's walk is new, I mean, it's not new, it's probably been twenty five years.
Why would they give it up?
To me, that's new. But because.
Not gonna get it now.
Right.
I think it's good, Robert, that you're going up to the second story, the connector to the main block of the house noticeably lower than the ridge of the household. Then you step back up about whatever, three feet or so.
About three feet, yeah.
To 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 the back ridge, but that makes.
Well, instead of running that ridge all the way.
Straight back.
Existing volume, I think that's really cumbersome.
Yes.
But all we, all that, the purpose of that connector is just that. There are a couple of closets in it, you know, there's no secret bathroom or anything, it's just. And yet, picture this, put your finger over that, imagine if you didn't have it, how lost would it feel? So you need, you need to join those.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't.
Or you'd have to go downstairs and back up again, to go to the addition.
You might wanna raise that chimney in the back, I don't even think that's the code.
Chimney in the back.
It's definitely not code.
The.
Well, I don't know, cause again, it's it's in it's in the bubble. You have the cloud of it at the same level as the ridge.
The cloud is just showing.
Yeah, yeah.
What condition is, so you need to come up higher on that.
Goes right to here.
Right.
And then you got. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're looking at A O four. And just so you know.
Take a look at, take a look at A O five. I'm not saying we can't do it.
Yeah, it doesn't matter in the uh, oh, I got you.
Look at the east elevation.
Yeah, that's it.
But, I mean, um.
Well, if it meets the code and it's gonna draw the smoke, I mean, you need it, but isn't there a relationship between
There's no chimney on this other one.
The height of the ridge and the placement of the chimney and the. I don't think chimneys uh count as part of the law, so. Right.
It's in the center of the building, I don't think it'll be anywhere near a setback issue, but if it's if it's.
That's this little, this is this little.
Yeah. I mean, we're not taking the chimney down and rebuilding it, it's just a.
Yeah, gotcha.
The very top of it.
Good, good.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, he's seen them.
He had, I didn't get a comment back on that. Yeah, but I'm just saying if there was an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a functional. Thing, not an aesthetic.
No, we have. Holy question. And that was a good question.
Megan, what do you think?
We can approve it. Go for it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve circuit of appropriateness.
Thirty six Glover.
At thirty six Glover Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. I've just got to walk up, you know, they can do their uh.
Down here.
Let's see. Twenty three, twenty three.
Yes, the new. Okay, sir.
One, two, three, four, six. I always count. Okay. No. The last things are going very fast, particularly when Brian DeSessa gets up there. Which one is twenty five Glover, and please, your name is Christine? Your last name, Christine? Okay. Okay, Miss Georgia.
I love your outfit.
Yeah, great color.
Thank you. So yeah, we're here. So, George, you're learning what you're looking at over here, and you've also got a planning schedule on the second page. And um also some more details about the wetland. And on this, this area of planting, see if any water here that was done um earlier and. Um, so I think what we were talking about last time was um concerned about privacy with the neighbors to the south and to the north. So we filled in um these areas uh between the trees that we um think we're gonna be keeping. Um, or we intend to keep, uh so anything outside of uh ten feet of our excavation area. Um, if deemed healthy at the time of excavation, it remains, so I'm, I've eliminated most trees from from what's existing. If you remember, this is a undeveloped lot, so right now it's filled with trees, so we're trying to keep a few. But we filled in the area with um, on the south side, we have kind of a layered planting, so larger bushes in the back, these are mountain laurels. Um, on the neighbor side of the property, there's a line of um of uh, I think these are green giants along here. So they're taking care of privacy up high, and what we're doing is taking privacy, taking care of privacy from like about eight feet and lower, six feet and lower, and then in front of that, we just have some perennial flowers. And then on the north side of the property, we're kind of doing something similar with larger bushes that'll kind of grow in and fill in the space. So we have uh ground cell bushes and andromedas. Because this is the north side of the house, we have also some ferns and some like little shade plants there.
I think you said beyond that there's also unclaimed land, right?
I mean, I know.
On the other side of the property line.
Uh, no, uh, which side of the? The current property is is out there, oh, oh, here, yeah, so they they plant mostly naturally, yeah, so there's a lot of existing trees on the north side.
Do you know how many of the uh trees that are already there you're gonna be able to keep?
Um.
Have you done a count?
We haven't done a a count yet, I mean, I've got, I've got five, these um, well, I've got this one here.
That says existing beach and.
And then these, everything, um, this is our about at our fifty foot line, so everything there we can touch. Um, so we're keeping at least within the area we're building.
Yeah. And um now did it, this is the landscape, we already approved the house, correct? Correct, yeah, yeah, and how about the fence around the pool, do we have that on here?
Yeah, well, actually, that is on, I brought the site plan.
Okay.
Which is not in your packet. We're using the house as part of our pool, so this is the border of the house, uh part of the pool fence. And then it comes around the patio here. Um, the patio is two feet above grade, so we'll go up another two feet with that fence surrounding this patio.
And that's the back, excuse me, the back of the house or the front?
And on the front, the same thing, it's coming off the side of the house, this is a four foot wall coming around the front. And then connecting to a fence up the property line.
And uh what is the fence material?
Brick.
Okay.
Yeah, smashing the house.
And the the gate?
The gate would be wood.
Do we, do you have a a for us to approve, do you have the the gate uh for us to see?
I I don't have that today.
Okay, so I think we should have that.
You wanna table it or do?
Well, unless she has a plan for the, and she can tell us about the gate. And the brick, what color is the brick and?
Yeah, I think I brought the brick one of the first, the first meeting, it was a long time ago, but I have it, I could bring it the next time.
I'd like to, I just consider that uh part of the landscape now, that that will be, yeah.
Yeah, and a and a brick fence is a little alarming.
Yeah.
Is it the same material as like the perforated part of the house?
Correct, yeah, it's the same kind of brick.
Yeah, so it's like gray brick.
Yeah.
That we saw.
It's a it's a wall or a fence, what's the difference? But a brick fence is a wall, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a garden wall that that accesses the pool fence, so it'll be four feet.
That sounds heavy, well, we kind of need to see it, right?
Yep.
We want to see the material and the the drawing.
Drawing of of what it's gonna look like.
Yes.
What it's gonna look like, and what the gate is going to look like.
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
Motion table? My second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye, aye. Sorry, I feel it.
I love the planting plan.
Yes, it's beautiful.
It looks like it's gonna be beautiful.
It's very nicely done. It's pretty.
Thank you, okay, is there anyone here representing um sixty three Terry Drive? Is there anybody on video representing sixty three Terry Drive? Okay, I.
So we'll.
So we'll, so just that we table it till the end of the meeting.
So we'll table it up.
Second, second call, second.
Second call, okay.
Then uh forty nine East Phil Avenue, please. Thank you.
Most of the addition is behind the house, this house was built in nineteen ninety two. We kept it in a similar architecture. So, most of the addition is behind the house, and we are using a garden plan board, fat and slim. Right. It's just like this, and the roof is a timberline. It's not as tall as the other years, we're also changing the existing house. On existing house to. Porch on the south side, there'll be um stand scene metal roof.
So you start an addition that's taller than the front?
Yes, just.
Okay.
It's it's not on, it's not a historic house.
No, it was built in nineteen ninety two.
Yeah, and it's not in the, is it in the, well, it doesn't matter, it's not in the house, yeah.
So we did try to.
And it is, there is like some setback.
Production is one store, so it creates a separation between the existing.
Right.
Yep.
Wouldn't that move? One man, wait.
Could you bring that addition back about eight or ten inches so it doesn't have a little bite out of the roof? occasioned by the pyramid line? I mean, it would just mean that the extension wouldn't. It already doesn't go as far as the one-story extension that's going to end up sitting in front of it.
There's a, there's some trees that they want to say.
It's just sort of drew right down there, it's like, I hope it covered that little bite.
It's not like a little.
It's a little bite.
Well, it's a, it's, it's a thing. Because it's so small, it looks like that's the reason it had to happen. If it were, you know what I mean, if it dropped that down.
I'd love to get rid of it, if you should add it, it's forward, we're going to come in front of the window and the kitchen.
So, okay, so just sort of in a historical mindset, not to drag this out any, but when you have that, it's a, it's a jerkin head.
Jerking head group.
Right, so you could, you could drop that down, so it's bigger. Make it bigger. I mean, there are only two choices, either make the extension shorter so it doesn't have to have that. Or drop it down so it looks like you did it on purpose. That what, to me, it sort of falls in between, like it just had to happen because of the pyramid, is how it reads.
I see.
And, and, and that's sort of like a who's.
That is it, that is it, right?
Unfortunately, it was the homeowner.
Loves it. No, I'm sorry, I'm putting words in your mouth.
No, no, they don't love it, but they would hate it if it were bigger.
Really?
Yes.
Have you gone designing for this?
Would they hate it if their house was?
We're on a really tight, I think, a really tight schedule. So if you went to the CBA, you know, that would be, you know.
I guess it's not that big a deal, it just sort of, it sort of jumps out a little, you know, but, you know, I. All right.
You see, see moving it.
It's not that bad looking from the front.
Do you see it from?
So do it on both ends, do it on both ends.
That's what I was thinking.
Make it look like it.
Yeah, yeah, really, it does.
It just, it, it seems that its only purpose is because you had to do it that way.
It would be so much better if it could be larger.
And failing that, do it at each end, and it would still look as if you.
Right, because of the pyramid or not? No, because the homeowner.
Bring it back further?
No, no, just make this.
Not a big.
Bigger, okay.
Doesn't that require like a lot?
It's a jerkin.
Doesn't that require a different framing?
Make it look intentional.
Yeah, exactly, it's accidental right now.
That's the extension now, so it's got, got to be framed anyway, so as long as it's in the plan, it's.
Right.
Or he said do it at both ends.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's the solution. What can you see, well, you can't see, you really can't.
That's in the back.
You're not going to see from the front, this is the front, right?
Right, but.
Of the house, this is a little.
Saying that make it.
Yeah, 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 no, I understand that.
So from the front, because that whole ridge line sits higher than the front house.
You're going to see it.
If you want to take two oh two.
Yeah.
You can see the entire length in the front, the entire length of that rear.
You're right.
Sits up above.
Yeah, there it is.
So I'm just.
With its little chump out of it.
Chomp on one end and no chomp on the other.
You're going to see that other end.
You do. Because the whole roof sits above about a couple of feet higher than the front.
I understand, it's still set back.
Okay, right, so if you're standing and looking up, you wouldn't. I see, okay.
I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal. It's not, you know, we're not looking at a historic house, right? So I think we're good.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To approve?
To approve, to approve, the plans as submitted for.
Do we have a second?
Whatever we have to say. Forty-nine East Phil Avenue. Okay.
Right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you folks? Thank you. Now, who's here for forty-five Denison Road, if you have any materials or things? Visuals? Saw some people move, I thought.
These guys all must be handsome. Thank you, sir.
Okay, where's our presenter? For forty-five Denison Road?
Yes, hi, I'm calling in, my name is Michael. I'm the owner.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, Michael, what's your last name, Michael?
Candoroff. Thank you.
Well, you have to show us.
My expediter, Steve Caputo, supposed to yawn. I don't see him on, but. Said he has all the files, I was wondering, I'm trying to text it to you where he is, I couldn't make it unfortunately, neither could he, but we're supposed to be on Zoom call. I do have Mike Marana, my modular engineer, on with me.
We have the drawings here.
I am not sure if the, that you updated spec sheet and material list back involved or not involved, I'm not sure if it's there though.
Yeah, I don't see it. We only have an electrical plan and.
We have a picture. Wait, you have, oh.
Well.
There you go.
It's a modular custom home, so it all comes in there, all the plans, I mean, the plan should have.
It's on Denison?
Yes, on forty-five Denison.
We have that.
So that's outside the district.
This, this is the.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, this is mostly not what you're demolishing.
No, this is what.
Those should be plans for the new construction.
Right, so the perimeter is for demolition.
And new.
And.
And new construction, okay.
Yes.
So we don't know what you're demolishing, if it's jewelry or anything.
It's not. On Denison, something, you know. Oh. Can I just, yeah, that's what's being demolished, yeah. A little bit, it's maybe strong.
Liz, what did you say?
A little patriotic. Yeah.
Sorry?
Liz, were you just speaking to us?
No, I wasn't.
No, no, I was just listening.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I think it was background noise, Carrie.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
Thirty-eight, we're delighted to be on part of your journey.
Oh, that's it.
That's your radio, boys. Away, ways, you sound like maps.
That's true, they're in the car probably, the guys.
That's about it, that's about it.
It's a modern, it's a module that's modern.
Yeah. Plus the square footage of the new.
That's it.
Does it say what the square footage is?
It's, uh, it's just over three thousand square feet.
Over three thousand?
Under three thousand.
Just under.
Yeah, it's just over three thousand.
I can't, I can't hear what.
Is he saying over or under?
He said under, just under.
Just under, okay.
No, no, it's just, no, it's just over three thousand. I don't know if you have trouble hearing me.
We don't have a.
Oh, sorry, one sec. Prize is better now?
We know it's going to sit on a truck, right? It's going to fit on a truck.
Yeah, but you can put a lot of boxes together.
Yeah, sorry, I have my headphones and I'll take it off. So it's just, it's just.
Three three eight five, so it's overflow. Thirty-three eighty-five. I wish we could see some numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Um, we're going to ask you to bring us back a couple more things. Next time, we feel the presentation is. Yes.
It's a little hard to, yeah.
Incomplete, it's hard for us to understand exactly what you want to do. It's, it's a modular house, which is, which is fine, it's great, but. Somebody give us a little rendering, a sense of the colors, a sense of the location, I don't see.
Yeah, I actually, I actually had that.
Excuse me?
No, I was going to say, yeah, I had the entire spec list rendering that I had given to my expediter, but I thought it was all there, but I could go over that with you. I was going to put some natural cedar planks. Uh, on the facade, just a yellow Alaskan cedar, one four inch. Uh, I was going to have the fascias, the fascia was going to be in, in black and the soffit would be the same natural cedar. So, uh, uh, black casement windows.
Well, that has to be rendered.
And for the garage door, uh, garage. Yeah, I could definitely provide a rendering to, you know.
No, I don't think.
That's not really a good site plan.
So we need a good site plan survey.
It's like a cross between a site plan and a survey.
Doesn't it have to go to a public hearing?
No, it's under three thousand.
No, it's over.
Over to thirty-three total, total over, so if they count the garage.
It's over, okay, I couldn't understand you, I'm not sure.
Living space.
Yeah, with the garage, it's over.
Yes.
Okay, okay, speaking of the garage, I know it's a modular house, is it possible to. Make the modular slightly different and not have the garage be the focal point of the front of the house? Okay.
Is there a, what, I mean, I was hoping garage, I was going to have a nice design. For the garage, either a wood panel or a metal frame with a, with a smoke glass.
So, Michael?
Yes.
We can't really hear you really well, and the board is requesting. Clearer plans, and so they can see where their visual board, so they want to see the renderings. So maybe you can wheel table and then you can submit all of that documentation and somebody can be here to present next meeting.
When would that next meeting be?
That is the thirteenth of April.
Okay, um, all right, and a basic email with all, wouldn't, wouldn't do any good, right, would it?
No.
No, we can, we can barely hear you.
We, it would be great for someone to come and present.
Yeah.
I see.
And need somebody to like present, walk through.
Yeah.
Pictures of your material, pictures of the house that's there now, a more detailed site plan.
So I think what we should do is we should table both forty-five Denison and two fifty-four Hampton, so you guys can come and present and walk the board through your presentation.
That one is.
Good idea.
Okay, understood.
That would be a big.
Thanks.
Motion table forty-five Denison. And two fifty-four Hampton.
All second?
All in favor? Okay, so we have a discussion, I know, a hundred Glover Street, is anybody here for that?
Here they come. Excuse me, here they come.
Please identify yourselves, sir.
We're here for the board, Brian Sessa, twenty-three thirty-one Mossel Highway for a discussion regarding a hundred Glover. I was here. A month ago, five months ago.
Yeah.
I had Aaron to crack modern with me here, we're here for a discussion with respect to the north lot, we have two lots. North lot, south lot, both are vacant now, north lot, which we're here this evening on, has always been vacant. It's approximately three quarters of an acre in an orange zone. We're proposing a house, it's in a FEMA zone, so there's no basement and it's slightly elevated based on FEMA requirements there. I would say in a single tenant home, of approximately forty-one hundred feet, it's one and a half stories tall. Pool, a pool house named separate detached one car garage. The layout of the house was, in our opinion, thoughtfully done to the area, so in terms of design and the architectural.
Okay, we don't have one over here, two or three over there. Can we have send one, one more down here, here, okay.
Different versions, so. Outstanding, one and a half, one and a half stories, so the ridge height is thirty feet. Outset back intentionally from the road of fifty-eight feet, or maintaining fifty-eight feet from the street. The zone there, you know, prevents the house to be at thirty-five feet, almost twenty feet further back, so that, coupled with the thirty-foot ridge height. Really makes it appear smaller, sapper from, from Glover Street in terms of what was there. You look to the side design of it. Broken up in terms of its mass, so it looks like, quote Mr. Feeney, a house that has been added on to, although it's new. It kind of has three different sections of house, so it kind of breaks up the massing in terms of roof line, roof material, and how that looks to be minimized. This is the side view.
Page six.
Page six of eleven.
Is it, is it where the farm was or is it near the farm?
It's, it's the farm property, but where the cottage and the barn was, was, is the south lot, this is what we're calling the north lot. So this is the area that was always vacant forever on Glover Street.
Oh, all right.
We'll be back.
I thought that was preserved.
No, but to the north of that and to the east of that is a nine and a half acre preserve that's owned by the county of Suffolk.
Oh.
County of Suffolk owns that.
Oh, okay. Oh.
That was trying to put a license for it.
So we're trying to put a park and a walk trail.
Correct, but it's owned by the county of Suffolk, so the county of Suffolk purchased all that land rights, almost nine and a half acres. That surrounds this property, the south property, which is on the property, which we'll be back for. And then heading to the north, it's some distance before you have a cluster of three houses, which are by the Paulson. I think it's beautiful, so, you know, to that end, we gave you a list of materials and everything else, we have a few things here, so we're setting it back fifty-eight feet from the street. We're coming, we're squeezed from the back because not on this lot, but on the adjoining Suffolk County lot is an identified wetland, so before the harbor committee, we have to give them seventy-five foot buffer for structures, fifty foot of planted. Twenty-five to thirty-five of that encroach onto the property, so even though the wetlands are located on the county property, it restricts the rear eastern side of this property. So to, to, to that point, it's. The, the thought and the developer and Aaron was to make it fit into the community, but not replicate anything of historic or other nature and kind of be interesting for that area, hence the one and a half story, so. You know, with the dormers, with the roof, we're not going a full two stories, we're obtaining height in there, but it's not, you know, appearing overwhelming or massive from the street. So we don't require any variances or anything like that, we comply with GFA lot coverage, building coverage and otherwise, so. And so we have, we gave you some materials, we gave you a rendering as to what it looks like, we wanted to come with a discussion before we got further on and we wrapped things up. We gave you a landscape plan. We gave you a landscape plan, uh, which shows the buffer, the buffer hasn't been developed, that'll be developed with the harbor committee, and then we'll come here. Um, there's a large, proposed large forest trees on the street, kind of break up that tree scape and kind of keep it informative, you call this there. There's a large willow tree on the property that will remain, the other trees not remaining, do landscaping, most of it all is already vacant and or was used for, you know, parking and other accessory uses from the farms, active and the subsequent uses there. I did, Aaron is here, who's an architect, answering the technical questions for you, uh, or otherwise. I've noted, it, it joins the historic district, while the lots aren't part of the historic district.
Right.
You know, to the south and to the west and a little bit of the east are parts of the historic district line. This lot and the south lot, which we'll be in later, are not included in that district, but since we're so close, it was sensitive in terms of development of what we were gonna propose there.
Megan, is this where the, uh, houses were, the, the farmhouses were, that you like, that were destroyed?
Yes.
No, this is that lot.
This is the one big lot, they, they divided it into two, yeah.
You have our toughest critic, Brian.
Well, this lot, I should tell you, didn't have buildings on, so this lot was always vacant, so the buildings came out in the other lot, which is not before this time, which will be, but.
This is probably where he grazed the house originally.
Anybody have any comments?
I, I think it's quite handsome design. Yeah, I'm looking at this and thinking it reminds me a little bit of the old barn that was there.
Well, I can speak to that, so some of the design thoughts were.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't wanna do it exactly as something like that, or we wanted to create something new, but that someone might, like, like you all are maybe seeing a little bit of, um, inspiration drawn.
Good.
I appreciate that it's not like an Italianate style, like a lot of Glover Street has become.
Yeah, right.
Although I, I don't wanna see more four thousand square foot houses. Glover Street has them, and, um, I think it's a nice design.
I, I would, I, I, I do, I understand that, I will couch it with, it, you know, a lot of those other houses benefit from a basement, some of them are not, but here being in an excellent store, there is no basement, so. Everything you have to do, mechanical, storage, everything for the house has to be done above the floodplain, so. You know, the, the current elevation of that lot is about five feet, the floodplain, what's it at, seven? So we're, we're very limited in terms of where we can go, and the village doesn't allot for, have to come up that two feet to comply with FEMA. The, the pyramid doesn't comply with that, so we're still keeping it under the pyramid and, and, and losing some of that, that dimension, which I'm still able to work with and.
But it's, it's, it's a large house with a modest presentation.
Yeah.
And it's a large lot, so this, this lot's almost thirty-six thousand feet, so.
It really, it looks small, like, you made it look small.
Right.
Yeah.
But it also is fifty-eight feet from the street.
Yeah, very nice, yeah.
If you walk down Glover, I don't think any other house on Glover is fifty-eight feet from the street.
No.
Like most of them at thirty or twenty or twenty if they're, uh, south of that in the historic district, so as you step back, you know, you get a little, you know, angle on that.
Uh, does anyone have any comments, observations or suggestions?
I mean, color-wise, material-wise, we're proposing, you know, darker, probably, so.
We don't have a planting plan.
Yeah, do these, these, yeah.
Um, you, you come in the yard center?
I do.
Yeah, that's a sort of. You have a planting plan?
Yeah. So this area, the buffer wasn't done.
So the buffer's not done because that's gonna be subject to the harbor, it's like a natural re-mention there, um, so we'll work that down and then come back.
And then they want calipers and shrubs and this.
We, yeah, we'll get that for you, absolutely.
That's kind of.
I love the simple desk.
So.
Almost looks like novelty siding.
Yeah, I would too. Are you there?
Yes.
Nice, Bill.
Thank you.
I think it's.
You're good.
Nice.
Well, we're looking forward to your final presentation.
Setting now that we know the direction.
You guys are muted, just so you know, sorry.
There you go. I didn't touch it.
I didn't either.
Okay.
So what did we miss?
So I'm, I'm, my question is.
Just a minute.
Should we go ahead and, and make it a public?
Well, when they submit everything.
They have to go to Harvard. Anyway, so.
I mean, for them, for us to plan to see it next, they.
Next time we see it will be public now.
It will, that's what I'm asking, is that true?
Because it's four thousand square feet.
But sometimes you see it all at once. Yeah. And it's a public hearing too.
Because that'll be the first presentation.
You can make.
They have to go into the harbor committee.
Yes, or we're, we're in that process now.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Okie dokie.
To you guys first, or we ask Republicans to make sure the comments, we can all address that now.
I got it.
Do, do you, um, do you have anything done?
No, everything applies.
Oh, that's right, because it's such a large lot, okay.
Good. All right, now, okay, you're good to go.
Very good.
I think. Yeah.
Would you have a motion to close?
Before, before, uh.
Give me a minute.
For my consent agenda, I do it after it's closed, all right, so let's do, uh, let's. Didn't we have one we have to call back? Oh, the callback, then I. Number six.
Motion to close the meeting on.
Wait, wait, wait.
Second call, anything from sixty-three Terry Drive?
No one else is on Zoom.
What?
No.
Okay. Oh, okay, that makes it easy. I move that we close the meeting?
Take it.
All in favor?
All right. Before, before you go, though, I, I would like us to set now who will be the two people for consent agenda for the next meeting. Like Meg's done it like three, at least three.
I'm happy. Have a good evening.